I'd like to call the March thirteenth, Tuesday, 2013 meeting of the Tavitton City Council Order. And may I have the little call, please?
Councilmember Lees?
Here.
Councilmember Dobbie?
Here.
Councilmember Whitmer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Carlson?
Here.
Mayor Lewis?
Here. So, I'm sorry that we're not in more of a workshop setting around a table and that we're in this kind of formal council setup. I was hoping that we would have more of a on-the-floor, more of a workshop environment. So, this is going to be a presentation of our mid-year budget adjustments and our March Rose channel repairs discussion. So, I'll call for any public comments on anything that is on the agenda because this is a special meeting. Do I have any members of the public who wish to speak at this time on anything that is on the agenda? Otherwise, we'll move on to our regular agenda and our mid-year budget adjustment report from our finance director, Mr. Robert Behrens III.
Hello, thank you. Good afternoon. You know what's crazy is it works when you try it the first time. Okay, there you go.
Usually works that way.
You want the lights on over there?
Well, if you want us to read this. I didn't bring my glasses. I just came over the agenda, I'm sorry.
I've got the seat. Hey, my tip. Okay, as you've all received in your packet, you've received our mid-year budget review and I just want to kind of go over that real quick. And you have that in front of you.
Can you use the speaker some better?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Could you focus this a little bit more?
There you go.
All right, calm down. Give Robert a chance to get organized.
All right.
This is technology, it's not you, Robert.
You're right. There's a problem, they're not on technology.
Okay.
Okay. As you, as reported in the report, this is our mid-year budget based off of at the end of February twenty eighth, where we received majority of our revenues. The general fund, we've had a, if you look, it's at nine hundred sixty-seven thousand increase in operating revenue. Of that amount, the increase of it was fifty, five hundred fifty-eight thousand was above budget due to property taxes. And this was in line with what the county had given us back in December, a projection about one percent. So, I wanted to go over that on the exhibit, that the nine hundred sixty-seven thousand increase that we're projecting for revenues, five hundred fifty-eight thousand is due to our property tax. So, that's a good indication that there's a nice change in the economic environment. In going through that exhibit, right here, the property taxes, we have budgeted at five million thirty-eight thousand. Our adjustment is going to be about one hundred fifty-six thousand to five million one million four. And that's based off of what we see right now and what we received in our first-time installment and projecting now in the year. That could change based off of maybe we could get more, maybe we're anticipating that the fees that the county will charge us will net that amount. It could be, we could get a bigger increase.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. And if you look at, on our property taxes, we have the, we're projecting our property taxes in the new VLF to be an increase about sixty-five thousand to now seven hundred forty-five thousand. Our excess ERAP is going to be about eight hundred ninety-two thousand, well, that's what we did receive. And we have budgeted six hundred ninety-five thousand, so the adjustment that we're suggesting is a hundred ninety-seven thousand to show us, show what we have received. We don't anticipate getting any more this year, so about eight hundred ninety-two is a big significant increase for us. And, you know, based off of six ninety-five to eight hundred eighty-nine, eight hundred ninety-two thousand, that's about a twenty-eight percent increase just from budget to what we got. And looking at it, if you notice, at the past three years, we suggested that we showed that our property taxes are between four point seven million and four point nine million in total property taxes, and it can be attributed to our growth of ninety point three percent that was, HDL had showed us back in December, that our growth was nine point three percent, point zero three percent in the county, and the rest of the county as a whole was about three percent. So, we had the highest growth for cities in the county. Going to other general fund revenues, I just wanted to show that our planning on zoning fees are about, as we said, are about eighty-two point one percent of our budget projected. We have put in there about an increase of twenty-one thousand above budget. Our building and construction right now, under estimation, we had done a decrease of about a hundred and eighty-six thousand in revenue, and that's just based on where we are right now. It could change, and I believe it will change as we're getting into the building, busy part of the building season. So, you'll see that that's where we're projecting our building fees. It's to be right now instead of at five hundred twenty-five thousand to a budget of nine hundred three thousand right now.
Do you have like an annotation up there on one of the numbers?
Oh, I circled it on the eight hundred ninety-two thousand for the ERAP.
I know, we discussed that, I didn't know you were making a change on that.
Well, and let me, I'll root to that point. Mr. Whitmer and I had discussed this, the ERAP, and, you know, for, and I'll go over a slide that I have that shows it, but right now, ERAP is something that we don't know from one year to the next what we will get. So, this eight hundred ninety-two, I don't think it's going to be something that we'll see again going forward in when we do our future forecasting. I think we're going about seven hundred thousand for ERAP funding. Right now, there's discussion, and it will be attended in the meeting, the next couple of days, the county having a shortage of, there's an ERAP shortage of projection, and it's our county and Contra Costa County are the two that are projecting that, so I'll find out more about that. So, I'm getting that money right now, eight hundred ninety-two thousand, and if only budgeting six hundred ninety-five thousand is a good windfall for us. So, that's something that we'll keep in mind going forward and not over anticipate that we'll keep getting that same amount.
Robert, could I ask you a question before you move on about the intergovernmental revenue, the Department of Public Works and Park program revenue, projecting increase of thirteen thousand five hundred ninety-six?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that broken out somewhere where we can see?
Yes, I, and I'll scroll down to the exhibit.
What page are you going through?
Look, it's Exhibit A on your exhibit, and it's page, it starts on page two.
Okay, good.
At the bottom of page one through page two. That is the net of all these numbers. If you see this three, nine, two, four, this twelve thousand four hundred, this adjustment right here to park revenues, so that amount that you see, that thirteen thousand is the net of those numbers altogether.
Were there, were there any revenues that came in? You know, when we looked at the overall budget, we had all these people here from the tennis, you know, many of which didn't have tennis keys, but there were like lots, lots of people. They all claimed they were going to get tennis keys, and Mr. Rojner, who was, I guess, one of the organizers and a big proponent of the tennis operation, said that he, he and Alan, who was the tennis pro out there, had contacted people and were going to get, make the tennis organization be a self-funding thing, and then they were going to raise all this money. Have we received any of that money yet?
On the class Bs, we're starting, on the key fees?
Yeah, well, they were going to raise up additional money because the key fees didn't pay for the maintenance of the court.
No, I have not seen any of that. And I'll make a note to, for me and to get in touch with him, and then maybe.
Yeah, we need to find that out, especially as we go into the budget period, because again, you know, the taxpayers can't continue to subsidize thirty-five residents who want to play tennis.
So, going back to the addition, the other revenues, that's the net of all those different categories.
Okay.
That's what that was.
Thank you. We'll go back to your, where you started, where you lucked off.
Okay, and I just wanted to, you know, we touched on the building department revenues portion, and again, that would be something that we will monitor, and, you know, we think that right now, as a conservative approach, adjusting it down just to anticipate if things don't change, but I have a strong feeling that with the change in the season and time, I mean, it's still early enough for that to increase, but we were just being cautious and conservative on that. I just want to touch on the total portion of, on one-time revenue. The general fund, besides the five hundred and plus addition in property tax revenue, we received one-time revenues of three hundred fifty thousand mitigation funds from Facebook, and also a net amount for a settlement claim that we netted out some attorney fees, and so it was a hundred eighty-four thousand of one-time revenue.
So, Robert, how are those being counted for? They're just being jumped into the general fund, or they're actually setting up a fund for the Facebook money to be parceled out?
Right now, the Facebook is in the general fund, and we put it into a mitigation fee revenue, and that's something as we get to our budgeting for next fiscal year, and we think of programs for that money, we'll earmark it, but right now, it's sitting in the general fund, but it's in an account that we can, that we know when we look at it, that's what that is. It's not lumped in property tax or anything, it says a mitigation fee. And as we get to budget, we'll just, we'll bring, I guess, we'll discuss the use of those funds.
And what's the status of the, we talked about setting up a more identifiable net fund for Park. What's the status of that?
That'll be part of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget process, where we're going to separate out park revenues as a proposal and park expenditures into a separate fund so we can track them independently of the general fund. That'll be part of the thirteen, fourteen budget process.
And the Facebook, based on the change, was three sixty now, right?
Right, and I was going to get to that. Thank you very much. Yes, the three fifty is also going to be added for mitigation funds, another ten thousand for the bike plan that they were going to also contribute for, that Facebook was going to contribute to us. We did bill them, invoice them last month, and so we should be getting that soon.
But that ten thousand is earmarked for the bike pedestrian plan, and the three hundred fifty is unrestricted.
Right, the three hundred fifty is, that's something that we will have to, that will be brought to council for what to do with those funds, but I guess, lumping the ten thousand here is just to, just to show that it was part of a mitigation fund, but you're correct, that ten thousand will be part of the bike plan.
Well, when we, when we approved the settlement with Facebook, we had said that we would accept the money and that we were going to, specifically, we were going to earmark it for, for road and transportation improvements, including bike paths, so that's, we'd already made that determination last year, and that we didn't want to just sweep it into the general fund and just leave it, but that it would be used over a period of time for either studies and/or implementation of those studies.
Yes, and we will do that when we begin the budget process. We will, that will be our, one of our categories or things of items to do for the next fiscal year.
Probably one of the best ways to do that is within the actual budget to move that money from the general fund into the capital improvement fund so that it can be identified for specific projects or studies, or whatever's necessary.
Okay.
And as we do that, let's give Facebook some credit, too. Just not say, okay, we've got the money, we're spending it, but let's, let them know. Have that spent.
And we don't have to spend it all this year or next year.
That's the perfect part about it, is we have those funds, and like City Manager, Mr. Roderick said, we will move that to our capital projects fund. That way, it's not lost.
I just think the key point that you're trying to make is that it's a one-time revenue enhancement, it's not something that we're budgeting, forecasting, forecast budgeting for.
I hope that we can get more.
You're right. We can have just a category, one-time revenues, and budget for that, and hopefully those start coming in.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, so, and that's why I just wanted to show you that of those amounts, that's a five hundred thirty-four thousand of one-time revenues, and as I said, as we get into the budget, we can, that'll be one of the transactions we'll do is we'll separate that Facebook mitigation funds for future projects as designated. Going down the, the overall expenditures that we have, we've gone through our departments and verified if there's any needs or decreases in expenditures, and the decrease is a net of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand within a department. And Exhibit B of your packet shows how that, within each department, from where the adjustments were made for this decrease of a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Why is the building department over, you know, the estimate?
On the building department, and I'll scroll down to that portion of the exhibit. Okay, so right here, you'll see the building department's portion, and it's a net of forty-one thousand, that's what you see back on the schedule for their increase, and it's a number of things, and there's three items to point out. When we said earlier on the revenue side, we were going to adjust about a hundred ninety thousand, eighty-six thousand to the revenue. So, in doing so, we are adjusting down the contract building services portion because it's in relation to the revenue side. It's a percentage of the revenue, so as the revenue went down, we adjusted down the expense, so that's where you see the ninety thousand decrease. On this amount right here, there's fifty thousand in regular salaries, and it was in the packet that it's regards to allocation that was approved, but it wasn't put in, in our budget. So, it's for the associate engineers portion of time between engineering and building services.
So, that expense got left out completely then, original budget?
No, it was in the budget, but it-
Where, where in the budget?
It was in, in building and also in engineering, but it wasn't actually entered in our system, so this is just showing.
But it should have been in Public Works. We approved it in June. It was at the budget meeting in June.
It's just, it's just putting it in the budget. It's been correct ever since the budget has been adopted, but it's just accounting for it, accounting wise, bookkeeping wise.
So, on the building department-
Well, we're going to have it, we're going to have it, and then they'll come to us.
On a P and L basis, the building department, I mean, the building department should be self-financing. We shouldn't have to put any money into it. At the moment, maybe I'm not looking at the right thing, but what revenues did we get in the building department? I need to find that out. I don't know which page that is on.
Okay. Page five or ten?
Page ten?
Five.
Okay, and I'll scroll back down to it.
Just tell me the numbers.
Well, so far, the building revenue is eight hundred and eight thousand up until at the end of February that was received.
And if the expenses are one point two million?
Then currently, the expenditures are seven hundred seventy-three thousand.
Wait a minute, I'm getting lost here. The building department budget, according to this, expenses, expenses were one point two million.
Oh, the expenses through February, expenses through February of this year were eight hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. The-
That's the revenue.
Sorry, revenue, sorry. The expenses through February of the building department are seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
So, it's, it's a positive thirty-five thousand right now, and that's after the building contract and our own operations.
However, the projected fiscal year 2013 revenues for the building department are one point one six seven.
Yeah.
And the projected expenditures for the building department are one point two eight four.
Yeah, so that's in the wrong direction.
Correct, and the majority of that issue is BKK.
Yes, that, that was the additional for the drainage plant.
Seventy-four thousand.
Correct.
Seventy-four thousand of that.
Well, I mean, that shouldn't be the case.
Well, Councilmember Dobbie, what happens is there is building reserves there that is, so it's not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of the building reserve bucket.
Yeah, but I mean-
Right?
Yes.
Am I correct in that?
Yes.
And the building reserves is about seven hundred thousand.
About seven hundred thousand.
There's about seven hundred thousand dollars of building reserves in the building department, okay?
Now, I thought that we had already depleted our reserves, the last time I looked at this. We had to deplete our reserves because the reserves were too high.
Are you talking the road impact, the component of things, but there's a lot of-
Talking about the building reserves. Our lawyer told us at one point, we had too much money in the building reserves, so we had to reduce, reduce the reserves so that, you know, we didn't need to increase building fees. But I thought we had now reduced the reserves to the number that would satisfy our legal requirements.
That number's seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that's what's in our reserves at the conclusion-
And that satisfies the legal requirements?
Yes. So, that's what we're drawing down on, but the BKK amount, that puts the expenditures beyond the revenues in the current fiscal year is a one-time expenditure. So, next fiscal year, unless there's borrowing or any other one-time expenditures within the department, revenues should exceed expenditures for the department.
Yeah, well, I mean, they should be at least equal.
Yes.
Because I don't think we want to take down the building department reserve anymore, and you're saying we're taking it down.
We do take it down for one-time expenditures, yeah.
I think the, the recommendation from the NBS consultant on a legal basis was that at the time when we had so many reserves of the building, we had almost a million dollars in reserve to reduce that to about five hundred thousand. So, now we are over the five hundred, so we're, we're in a safe zone.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And we're doing-
Well, we'll go, continue. Thank you.
Are we at the stage on expenditures for questions at the moment, or I don't want to get ahead?
I think he's continuing to make his presentation.
Yeah, and, well, as, as was discussed, the mid-year adjustment to our total departments is a hundred and twenty-six thousand, so our beginning budget was ten hundred, ten million eight hundred seventy-five thousand, so with the adjustment on the expenditure side, decrease in some operation expenditure budget-wise, brings us to ten point seven million.
I'd just like to congratulate our police department for reducing their expenses by forty-eight thousand dollars, and I don't know where it went, but I know that you've been working on a very skinny budget, and you've been really managing the department very well, so that needs to be acknowledged. The eighteen thousand dollars that our public works department has reduced their expenses, I think that needs to be acknowledged also, and I don't know where the administration reduced the hundred thousand dollars, but there must be a vacant seat somewhere.
Actually-
Our salary is less.
You brought that up.
They stopped paying us, right?
So, some of, some of the police savings were based on the fact that we paid in one point two million dollars to pay down the purse, and that we didn't have to service that. And I think of the, the write-up says, I'm looking up what the total amount of the projected savings was at that time, but unfortunately, I think it actually, we were expecting more than the forty-eight thousand dollars, but we were expecting that plus the non-missling is to be somewhere on the order of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. It was going to be, yeah, two seventy-nine thousand from safety and one hundred and ninety-two thousand from non-safety, respectively, and that was in the item twenty-two of the June report on the twentieth of June. Okay. Can I ask a question about the police department?
Yes, sir.
I know that our police department at the moment is down, what, three police officers? Is that correct, Ed?
Two sergeants and one police officer.
So, three policemen. So, if we'd actually been up to staff, we wouldn't have been saving forty-eight thousand dollars in any way, in fact, we'd be over budget.
Not necessarily. We are trending high on overtime because of the backfill for those positions.
Okay, I'm just saying that we don't have to talk about that, but when we get into budgeting with more police officers, that number is probably not going to be as advantageous as it looks at the moment, so.
No, and some, and some of the adjustments, where you see the net, it's due to the police department having, not being fully staffed, so the adjustment is to offset the overtime portion, but, you know, as a department, they're, just like all other departments, doing their due diligence to make sure that it's, you know, that we operate with what we, with what we need.
Okay.
Thank you. So, in, all the, the exhibit shows a detail, Exhibit B shows a detail of each of these department's mid-year's adjustments. So, going to, to the overall fiscal impact in general fund, you know, as a result, the adjustments in the revenues and expense savings is a net increase to the projected fund balance of a million ninety-three thousand one hundred, and that's the, that's coupled with the nine hundred and plus thousand in the revenue adjustment increase, plus the savings in the expense, expenses within the different departments. So, our budgeted fund balance, net fund balance was four hundred and forty thousand, coupled with this adjustment at mid-year of what we project our fiscal year end fund balance for the general fund should be one point five million.
Sitting in the interview, do you want to say something?
Robert, just one moment, the city attorney just said he's going to be thirty thousand dollars under budget, so that's good.
Did we see that in here?
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily show that, but the two hundred and four thousand that was in there was basically carried over from years past, and it covers contingencies like when we went out to mediation and- And it covers contingencies like when we went out to mediation in the Fletcher Ridgeview apartment. But then he netted it out in the amount that's, that was part of his revenue.
No, it's not two fifty-two, it's one fifty-four.
And if you put that back in, really more like fifty, fifty thousand under budget. But we don't know what's going to hit us in the face in the next few months. So as I told the city manager, I'm fine with leaving it in there, but at the end of the year, I think you'll find we're probably somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars under budget.
Nice. That's, that's really good news.
All right, Robert, just wanted to share the good news.
Surprise.
Because that was going to be my joke in one of the other slides, is, you know, the attorney didn't have any changes. I tried and I'm still trying to get some more.
Yeah, I know, you need to get a little bit better. And we ask for people for their total indicated cost. They actually need to give something, so appreciate the money, but do a better job forecasting, Mr. Attorney.
Sorry.
It's going to go up next time.
So as you see right here, there's, that's what we project for the fund balance. And we're going to account for our different categories for our fund balance policy. For our fifteen percent for the budget stabilization, stabilization reserves, one point six million. For fifteen percent for emergency reserves, the same, one point six million. We have a working capital, five percent of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And there's a community treatment maintenance, and so that gives us to an undesignated of three point five million projection. So this is just showing, based off of the fund balance, how we break out the categories. And we're still meeting our budget reserve policies currently. And that will continue to be the focus as we budget for the future and forecast also for the future.
So where are the mitigation fees coming from?
The mitigation fees will, once we adjust it, they'll be part of the undesigned, undesigned.
Where are they coming from? Their result, what?
The mitigation fees for Facebook.
Is that the Facebook?
Yes, that's what that is.
So what about the, you and I spoke earlier, and I appreciate the time you've spent with me, the seven hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars that we're paying off, that we approved in June to go into the PERS payoff for the non-safety?
Right here.
And again, as you do the budgets, you know, as I pointed out earlier, you know, we were expecting, and I gave the wrong number. The projection in this report was two eighty-two, five thirty-four savings from the safety and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, all estimated in this year, for a total of three hundred and twenty thousand nine seventy. That should have come off the, off the, for making the investment, these investments we were supposed to be saving, that wasn't included in the budget, almost three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So that should have come out of, that should have been an immediate adjustment there to one's budget, and it didn't seem like it happened. So if we're making these things, I would hope that we would make these changes again. Because this is, even accounting for the underrun of fifty thousand dollars, I mean, we're still almost, you know, two hundred and, almost a quarter of a million dollars off.
Councilman Weber-Dobbie, could you get us on your same page of what you're talking about?
Oh, sure.
Because I can't follow along with what you're saying.
Okay, well, we approved the budget last year in June. And then after approving the budget, we approved that we were making payments into the PERS system to pay down our PERS obligations. We paid down approximately one point two million dollars for the safety, and we allocated seven hundred and four thousand dollars for the non-safety, the miscellaneous plan. And the purpose of doing that was to save us money going forward in the future because our obligations would be less. The council report that came to that time, you know, identified the savings that should be expected should we have, should we approve this, this investment of almost two million dollars of general fund money. And that was going to net a savings of three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And that should have been taken, the three twenty-one should have been taken out of those departments' budgets because we've made those investments and we're not getting any return. Plus, part of that investment was going to be made towards the end of this year, as you and I had discussed previously. So we need to accrue for that when we're making our projections for year-end.
Well, the, to your point, the seven hundred and four thousand hasn't been paid yet, so that wouldn't have come out of the current year.
Well, it's said in this report, though, it was going to be paid at the end of the, at the end of the year, was the recommendation. And they still were showing a thirty-eight thousand dollar savings. But we did pay at the end of last year, one point two million, and it was supposed to net us at the safety budget, two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars.
And on that, it's built in, because the rate changed, so it's built into our rate for, based on.
It wasn't built into the budget because the budget did not have that in the time. Because at the time, we built this budget and approved it, because it was done in the same meeting, we didn't know if we were going to approve it. So it's not included in the budget, and it didn't come into any sort of adjustment.
It's what we're paying now.
We paid that last year, in the last fiscal year.
We paid the one point two million dollars to the local safety PERS side fund, and that would have had an impact on the current year's PERS rates, which should show as a reduction in expenditures.
A two hundred and eighty-two, five thirty-four savings that I don't see.
And it may not have come out to that number.
Well, so we had, yeah, what came out to, well, it's been attributed to. We had an underrun in our safety budget of forty-eight thousand or something like that.
But we can certainly provide the council with the difference between what that number was supposed to project, the two hundred and eighty-two thousand that we're showing there, and what actually occurred. We can certainly provide that.
Well, I would hope, and I would appreciate seeing that as we, as we move further in this budget. But when we make investments that are going to save us money, then the money that we're saving needs to be taken out of those departments' budgets at the time we're making the investment. It shouldn't take a council member to have to go back through old reports to find out the money we should have been saving.
Well, the money would have come out anyway if it wasn't savings.
Well, I don't know if it came out or not, you know, we're providing accolades. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we're providing accolades for people underrunning and overrunning, and we're feeling good about ourselves. And I'm feeling that maybe we should be feeling a heck of a lot better where we should be saving an extra three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, why don't we just ask?
So please look into it, please.
Put together an analysis for us.
We can certainly do that.
This was the beginning assumption. This is what actually happened.
Exactly.
And to show about this exhibit, and I'll give you all copies of this. I can't find them. I think I left them on my desk. I apologize. But.